And great to see all of you and it's nice to meet virtually with the three new counselors as well. And so the reason that we're doing this work session tonight is because typically what we would do before your interviews is we would meet with you the hour before and do a an orientation and kind of walk through the process and the do's and the don'ts and but since your first interview starts at 8am, I thought it would be humane not earlier to come in and do the orientation, but the other reason is that you do have three new counselors. And so I thought it might be helpful for new counselors to hear a little bit about where we came from, how we got to this point. So that you're ready for the starting gates of the interviews when they happen on Thursday. So so with that, let me just quickly go through the process that we've done to date and those of you who've been through it. This will be old stuff for you, but I think it'll be good to kind of recap. So one of the things that we wanted to do when we first came on board was to make sure that we put together a profile that fit Carlton, that fit the city manager that you want to have in Carlton. And so we we talked to all the council members at the time and we gathered information, we put together a profile and then council adopted that profile. That profile is particularly important because it serves as a foundation for the for the evaluation of the candidates and also for communicating with the candidates of what you're looking for. And I sent to you on Friday the profile that was adopted by the council as well as the recruitment brochure that we sent out that was based on that profile. And there should have been pretty much all parallel concepts between the two documents. So we use that profile to develop the brochure, we use the profile and the advertising that we did. And you'll see thematically that it continues on up until this point. The petition was advertised October 26th to November 23rd, we had four weeks, we received 32 applications in total. Overall, in my experience, we had a fairly strong pool coming in of those 32. 11 of the, there were 11 states that were represented. 17 of those candidates were from Oregon. We had 15 candidates that had city manager or assistant city manager experience. And fairly and almost over half of them had advanced degrees as well. So again, this is a pretty strong pool. The application review, we used the profile to develop the evaluation criteria when we evaluated the applications. And so we first looked at it from the standpoint, do they, did they meet the minimum qualifications that that you set out in your profile and those folks that didn't moved off the list and then we applied to apply to scale and according to the profile. Out of that, we identified 11 semifinalists that we were going to interview. Two of them withdrew before we did the interviews, we interviewed the other nine by Zoom and at after we interviewed them, but before we were able to get to council to talk about the finalists, two others pulled out. So we ended up with seven that we brought to the council for consideration for the finalists and out of that, that's where the group of four that you see now came from. So there was a lot of vetting all the way through. And again, I keep emphasizing, but we rely very heavily on the profile to make sure that that we're in keeping with what you're looking for. So since the council identified the four finalists that you have, we have been doing reference checks on all of the candidates, all the finalists candidates. And we have also been doing background checks. We do criminal and credit and employment and education verification. So that's all been done in the interim period of time. So that brings us up to our finalist week that we are just beginning. And so just to quickly walk through, I think all of you have seen the the schedule for the week. I believe we've sent that out to everybody. And it starts tomorrow with two receptions that are both virtual. One reception is for staff for them to be able to interact with the candidates and then one for the community. Now, the, the way that we do these receptions, each of the candidates has an opportunity to give a five minute spiel about themselves and about their background and why they applied for the job, why they think they're the best candidate. And then we break people up into groups in both receptions and they do, they have small group discussions. And the groups are divided up by the candidates. So each candidate is in a different group and then we rotate people until everybody's had a chance to meet every candidate. At the end of the receptions, we then put out a online survey for folks to fill out that day tomorrow and send back to us with their comments and their ratings of the finalists. So that that's the receptions. Now, I do want to address participation in the receptions, especially as it relates to you folks on the council. The council is very welcome to come and participate in the receptions and might give you an opportunity to see more informally the candidates in there as they're talking to people and to participate. The one thing that I would suggest is that if you plan to attend, well, first of all, let us know because we are doing RSVPs. And unless someone is RSVP, they, they're, they're not coming into the, to the reception. So please RSVP to Anthony in our office and we can make sure that you have that information, but it should be on the invite. And if you can get back to him by 10 o'clock tomorrow morning, that would be ideal. And that helps us to prepare for the, for the reception. The other thing I would mention is since you do have an opportunity and you will have an hour and a half in the interviews with each of the candidates, we would suggest that you allow other people who may not be on panels, the opportunity to to converse with the, with the candidates. That said, that doesn't mean you need to be absolutely quiet and not say anything. But in as much as there is there's space for people to talk and you've got people who are going to be a panelist, letting them have some time would be good. So, and you will not be filling out the survey because you will have your own evaluation as well. So that's the, that's the reception. Then we move into two days of interviews. We've got four panels that are setting up, that are set up, including yourselves as one panel. And on the first day, on Wednesday, we will have two panels, the department managers and the administrators. And on the second day, the morning, Thursday morning, we will have a citizen panel that you have, that the council appointed earlier on and a, and the council, of course. All of the panels, except for the council, will have an hour with each of the candidates or roughly 45 minutes and there's a little bit of time in between to be able to to transition. But the council, we had budgeted an hour and a half because you obviously are going to be the deciding group and we want to make sure that you get the time you need. The, all the panels get their own questions. So there are different questions that are given to each of the panels. Each panel will have an opportunity to ask beyond the core questions, some questions on their own at the end, so time permitting. The, and we will have a moderator for each of the panels and you lucked out, you got me for your moderator. So I will be with you during your interviews. Following that, we will have on Friday, your executive session when you will deliberate on which candidates you would like to select. And during that executive session, we will debrief your experience in the interviews. We will share with you what we learned from the receptions, what we've learned from the panels, what we learned from the references and what we learned from the background check, checks. And so you'll get kind of a big information dump at that point. And then after that, you'll have the opportunity to deliberate and to figure out who you think best fits Carlton. So that gets me to my next point, which is some things that I would suggest you consider in evaluating who it is that you would like to hire. And the purpose of going through these interviews is to vet the candidates from the standpoint of who is the best fit. All of the candidates are qualified or they wouldn't be on a finalist list, but now it comes down to who is the best fit. And from that standpoint, you want to look at who can you work with? Who can you see working with on a, on a regular basis? And will they give you the support that you need as a council? Does the candidate have the style and the personality to achieve the priorities that you outlined in the profile? Do, do they fit that? So again, it comes down to a question of fit at this, at this stage in the game. And there are a lot of factors that come into play when you start talking about that. We've gotten past the qualification section. We're now looking at, okay, given their particular backgrounds, given their personalities, given given their experience, who's the best to, to be able to, to support you as a council and to manage the city? So you will have notebooks available to you. We have briefing notebooks that we brought in the semifinalist phase. I know, at least I think all of you have had an opportunity to review the notebooks, even the new counselors, I hope that you've been able to, to review the, the notebooks that we had. All the same information will be in the notebooks that you get in the finalist interview phase. And in addition to that, we will also include some other items. Most notably, you will see the questions and we will review the questions with you in the morning. You'll see we started 7:45. The first interview is at eight, that gives us a chance to quickly kind of run through the questions and, and set up the interview process for the morning. You will also see in your packet that there are that there are interview guidelines. Now, I know from talking with some of you that you have, some of you have experience in hiring people, experience in interviewing. We offer a set of guidelines. If you're not as familiar in terms of the do's and the don'ts of what you can and cannot ask and, and what you can and cannot say. Am I allowed to share a screen, Kristy?
You are, I might have to accept it. So try the screen.
Okay, let me pull this up first. No, I can't.
Let me look. All right, now try.
Okay, let me get, get the background out of the way there. So I, I do want to run through this with you tonight because we won't really have a chance to run through it in the morning on Thursday. But we want you to, and this will be in your notebook too. So you'll, you'll be able to, to see this when you get your notebook. But there are certain prohibitions for state and federal provisions of things that you cannot ask. And you cannot ask about a person's age or anything that would lead to a person's having to reveal their, their age by, it's inadvertently. Marital status, you cannot ask about their marital status. You cannot ask about their financial composition, how many kids they have. And issues such as children and daycare. You cannot ask about their sexual orientation or their political affiliation or their religion. Their, the race, their race, ethnicity, national origin. And then in terms of disability, illness, medical conditions or absences due to illness. It has to be limited to, do they have the physical ability to do the job that they're being asked to do? But you can, you cannot ask them specifically about illnesses and disabilities, medical conditions. So we also advise that as you're going through the interviews that you avoid trying to ask trick questions that unduly stress the candidate. We suggest that you create a comfortable atmosphere because you have to remember they're interviewing you too. And particularly when it comes to city councils, city manager candidates are very sensitive about whether or not you're a council that they can work with. And so just remember that you're trying to sell yourself as much as they're trying to, to sell you. You keep the questions objective, professional, job related, avoid questions in a personal nature. You avoid possible solutions to posing possible solutions to problem based or situational questions. Let the candidate generate his or her own solution. So if you're asking a question of what would you do if, then don't leave, avoid leading them to a conclusion. Avoid unduly sympathetic or unsympathetic works, gestures or facial expressions that would make the candidate think you agree or disagree with their answers. Avoid displaying your personal opinions or viewpoints. Avoid unnecessarily long questions and remember you're there to learn about them. They're not there to learn, well, they are to a certain degree to learn about you, but this is mostly finding, getting the information from them. So the more airtime you, you take up, the less airtime they've got. And then just remember that any notes that you take could possibly at some future point be released as public records. So and so that's, that's pretty much it in terms of of that piece. And let me see if I can, I'm going to stop share now and come back. And at this point, I'd like to open it up for questions.
You mentioned that, that you got the background check information, I think you said today. When is that shared with us?
That is shared with you at the executive session on Friday.
Okay.
We, we, we don't, we don't give you the reference materials or the background checks until after because we don't want to unnecessarily influence you during the interviews. We want you to make your own conclusions during the interviews and then you can apply these other factors as we share them with you. Other questions?
What time again is the community reception?
The community reception is from six to eight o'clock.
Tomorrow, right? Yeah.
Would love to see you there.
On tomorrow's, tomorrow's. This is Grant.
You cut out there for a little bit.
For tomorrow's meeting, it's, it's needed though, that I need to go to them, to your, to your webpage, I guess it is, to do the RSVP or to communicate it that way or communicate with you tonight.
You can communicate with me tonight if you'd like, and I will pass, pass it along to Anthony in my office who is, who will send you a, an email that has a link for you to join, to join the reception. So if you tell me tonight, otherwise in the advertisement for the reception emails there and you can just email and say, I plan to join and he'll send you that.
Okay. I'd like to join as well. I don't recall seeing that invite. So if, yeah, if he could forward those, that'd be great.
Okay.
And I'm telling you tonight, yes, I want, I want to be on the list.
All right. I just wrote your name down. You're officially on the list and all right. So I got.
Do you know how many RSVPs we've gotten from the community so far?
Yes, we've received 12.
This is Kevin Eric. I'd also like to be on the list for tomorrow, please.
Okay.
Um, and just so I do things by, you know, keep things by the book. Are, you did say that give other people the time. But we are allowed to participate as a council member in the community forum tomorrow? Or should we just be more of a bystander and stand by and listen? I just want to make sure I do the right thing.
Sure. And I appreciate the question. It's fine for you, for you to interact with the candidates. You don't want it to be awkward where you're standing there not saying anything. But on the other hand, I would defer to others who are not on panels or not on the council. So that they have their opportunity because they're the ones that will be filling out the survey at the end of the evening. So, but to ask a question would be fine. Just make sure you're staying in the parameters of what I just gave you in terms of guidelines. And I, I would recommend frankly, keeping it rather light. Because you'll have the chance to really grill them in their, in your interview. So it's going to be good to see the candidates. It's helpful to see the candidates in this environment and how they're interacting with citizens. How they're responding to people. And so your role there, I think is best described as observational. So.
So on that, that list you gave us of what we can and can't ask of the candidate, how is that list based in tomorrow night's event? That there is pretty well thrown out the door for the public?
That's a, that's a really good question. And there's no way that we can, that we can police all of the conversations that are going on or what, what the public says. What we can do is we can advise the people, if they bring something up that's not appropriate, to say the candidate doesn't have to answer that. I will tell you that you will also have in all these small group discussions, members of my team. And we will be monitoring the conversations as well. So you can expect that we would be the ones that would, that would chime in. If it, if it went down that, down that way. We've had pretty good luck for the most part over the, over the years in terms of people not asking questions that they shouldn't ask. But inevitably you do get somebody saying, oh, you've got kids. Oh yeah, I've got kids in high school too. Boy, that's a really tough, tough period of time. That's, it's not a formal interview. It's a conversation. So there's a fine line here.
Okay, that helps. I'm just curious if, how you govern the community on their questions that are asked, that's all.
Yeah. And we'll offer a few guidelines at the beginning, but again, we're trying to treat this as an informal meet and greet more than a, an interview session. We want to see from the community standpoint, do, do they feel comfortable with the candidates? Do they, do the candidates give them confidence in them?
How do we get, logistically, how do we get moved into groups within the Zoom framework?
I have this person on staff, Anthony, who I referred to before, he is a magician. And I don't know how he does it, but he, he shifts it. So the group that you start off with will stay together through each candidate. So you'll, you'll go with your group to the first candidate and then 20 minutes later, you'll automatically shift to the next candidate. And then, and so on.
That's interesting. I mean, it's kind of cool because our last, I mean, when we went through the hiring process, the last time it was an actual live event and all the candidates were there and everybody was just mingling and circulating and
Yeah.
Very informal.
Yeah. And frankly, before COVID, that's the way we used to do it. It used to be a mingle, everybody's on their own to go talk to whichever candidate they want to talk to. For better or worse, with, with COVID and, and moving on to Zoom, we do have the ability to bring a little more equity to that. With everybody being able to meet every candidate and have the same amount of time.
I have a question.
Yes.
Why are the survey questions and why are you able to share that with us tonight? Or is that something we can see during their executive meeting?
Which questions?
The survey questions for the citizens, they, they will have it tomorrow that people will be answering.
Yeah, well, we will definitely share it with you in the executive session. And, and I'm, yeah, I mean, you'll see it at the executive session, but the forums, I, I will tell you that. But the forms, I, I will tell you that, that the forms, the survey forms that we put out are pretty simple because we don't want an onerous form that somebody has to take forty-five minutes to fill out.
Yeah.
The questions are on a scale of one to five, how well do you feel the candidate meets this? How well do, do you think they will fit within our community? How well, and then there's four or five of those categories. And they just, they check off on one to five, how they, how they, how they rate the candidate. And then there's a place under each for comments. So if they want to elaborate further, they have an opportunity to make some comments.
Okay. So have an idea what the citizens would like to have as a city manager based on those ratings there.
Right. And, and what we do is we, we average out those ratings. We will bring those to you along with the comments to the executive session.
Okay.
And Eric, just to piggyback on that, we'll also hear the staff's comments also, I'm assuming in executive session.
Absolutely. And all the panels will have evaluation forums where they will do their, their rating. But with a moderator at each of the panels, each moderator will do a debrief at the end of the interviews to, to get takeaways on each of the candidates from the panel's perspective. And we will bring those takeaways to you as well. So you're not just going to get a number or a few comments. You're going to get the takeaways from the group as a whole.
Eric, can I ask, how was for tomorrow's event? How is that advertised to the city? To the residents of the city?
I'm going to turn to Kristy. Yeah.
It was posted in businesses, posted on Nextdoor, posted on the website, posted at the post office, any place that we thought citizens could see or hear of it. And then we gave it to CBA and I think that was all of it, just trying to get it out there as much as possible.
Okay. All right. Yeah, I'm just always curious.
What other questions can I answer for the council? Any, any concerns I need to be aware of at this point with regard to the process?
I'm good as well.
I'm okay with everything.
Okay.
Same here.
All right. Well.
Hearing no questions, Council President Ward Mullen, if you want to call for adjournment.
Yes, it's six oh four and I call to adjourn this meeting. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody. We'll be seeing you all week.
Thanks, Eric. Bye.